Good evening, everyone. It is now 6:00 P.M. August 4th, City Council meeting will come to order. The ninth invocation is presented by Vice Mayor Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Heavenly Father. Father, we come to you this evening to ask for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us, Father, to engage in meaningful discussion and help us all, Father, to grow closer to our community. Father, may all our decisions be righteous in your sign for our benefit in your glory. Father, please be with our law enforcement and all our first responders and keep them safe from harm as they serve and support our city. Father, our citizens, our staff, our mayor, and our council members are often tasked with making decisions for this wonderful city. And Father, you have blessed us with free will to make our decisions. I pray that we all remember that our important decisions always work best when we go to you first, Father, to create for directions. And Father, thank you for a beautiful city. We know that many of our citizens suffer through the storms and many are still dealing with hardships. But Father, we are still so often reminded of what a beautiful, audacious art is you truly are. Continue, Father, to remind us that all that we do here this evening, all that we may accomplish is for the pursuit of truth or your greater glory. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Now, please rise and join me in the place of allegiance. The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Renee, would you, um, you're not Renee, I'm sorry, Kathy, would you please?
Yes.
Yeah, a little, uh, you know, old age catch-up in there.
Councilmember Frank Banker?
Present.
Councilmember Kimberly Shaw Elliott?
Present.
Councilmember Todd Harper?
Present.
Councilmember Jody Shirley? Councilmember Anders Welling? When he is on?
See him in a box. All right. Yeah.
Vice Mayor Roy Roberts?
Here.
Mayor Daniel Gavis?
Here.
City Manager Kyle Reebler?
Here.
City Attorney Tom Trask?
Here.
All right. Kathy, I'd like to apologize. This is what happens when there's your recycle holding minutes. All right, our first floor of business is approval of the agenda. Before we, before I call for that, I would like to ask someone to make a motion to add items fifteen and sixteen, unfinished business and council comments to the agenda.
It's only.
All right. I heard a, uh, Elliot had the first, and I believe that was Banker had the second. Um, all in favor? Aye. All right. Any opposed? All right. Now we need to approve the amended agenda. I need a motion for that. Motion is made by Frank Banker. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Elliot again. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right. The agenda is approved as amended. All right. Next, we have presentations from the Pinellas County Sheriff's Office, beginning with the monthly law enforcement report. Welcome, sir. Please come on up and introduce yourself.
Good morning. I'm Sergeant Schuler with the Councilman Sheriff's Office. I am the new beat supervisor out here. Today's actually my first day. I'll be the eight nights supervisor in front today for that. Kind of looking at the, I apologize because we've been having some computer issues. I've been trying to research and stuff right now. But looking at the June report, which is the one I believe you guys have, um, in June, there was a total of three assaults. There was one burglary. There's three thefts. That motor theft vehicle, after further research, looks like it was an error. I believe it was a telling error that wasn't laid before. There wasn't a vehicle theft out here. As for arrests, there was a total of thirteen arrests out here. Not necessarily thirty people, but nine people arrested, thirteen charges total. By looking through them, most of it's all traffically, self-trafficking to the city. As a statistic from the actual deputies, say the total of eight hundred sixty-eight events or calls pulled, one hundred ninety-seven will be in directed patrols, one hundred eighty-one via traffic stops, one hundred seventy house checks, seventy contact calls, fifty-six illegally parked vehicles, forty-seven warrants violations, twenty-one traffic controls. That's kind of the main bulk of it, all mainly proactive activity out here. There was only one vehicle crash in the month of June. As of warnings and citations, a total of two hundred seventeen citations, uh, two hundred seventeen citations and warnings were issued by deputies in Beller Beach during the month of June. And that's kind of the main stats. Unless you guys have more questions on the report.
Thank you, Sergeant. Uh, any questions or comments for the council?
Okay. I, I actually have a question.
Yes, sir.
I have noticed that e-bikes now go faster than the speed limit.
Yes, sir.
Way faster, uh, to the point where you're trying to stay under the radar gun and not get in trouble, and they're literally passing you, and they're on sidewalks going that fast. Uh, is there any talk going on right now about what to do?
So I know, as the sheriff's office, we just issue placards every deputy with like the stipulations, because most of those probably aren't legal based on classification. There's different classifications of e-bikes, and most of them might go that fast. Definitely they're not legal and should be stopped by deputies out here. And we are actually in the process of educating our deputies better about the newer laws, because the laws are kind of falling, catching up to the bikes per se. Because it used to be kind of like, if it's electric, it doesn't follow. But now there is actually laws in place for most of those, and now we're in the process of educating the deputies so they start enforcing those more.
It seems like they're going so fast now, they should actually have license plates on them.
Actually, a lot of those ones that go that fast, per statute, you can register, and there's nobody to register, and so they're illegal, most of them, that go that fast. Probably don't see what you're talking about.
Got you.
So there's like a class, speed limit classification, which is like, I don't think there's an exception for that. But the ones that are going faster than the speed limit out here, most likely aren't legal and should be stopped, and there's more education on the deputies. These are some forces.
Does it make sense whenever you see somebody on a sidewalk doing forty-five, maybe you should dial nine-one-one?
Yes, and it should be stopped, because that's not safe for pedestrians. So what are the person on the e-bike at that point? If someone should be going up and down curves and bumping that fast, I think that much less it's illegal, so.
Okay. All right. Thanks for answering my questions. Any other questions for?
On that note, they've been running up and down the walking path of the Bosway Bridge, not the white path, e-bikes. And like you said, I don't know what kind of speed, but it's a bad speed. They keep up with the cars, I mean. And it's scaring the hell out of some of our residents coming to Walrus. Just having laid out Walrus.
Vice Mayor Roberts?
Yeah, on that topic, I think it's almost worse sometimes on the beach when you have toddlers out there, and really, nobody's expecting to see an e-bike coming by, you know, thirty, forty miles an hour. And they're so quiet, you literally do not hear them. And a toddler runs out there, I hate to think what could happen. Um, I don't know what the solution is. I hate to bring up a problem with no solution, but it's, it's very dangerous to see those bikes go by with little kids on the beach.
And obviously, my first day here, so I'm not sure how much that, do you have like placards, anything being made recently that can distribute to all deputies? And they should be starting to force that stuff, so if anything, just make sure that deputies here are all well-educated on that as well and passing along. So hopefully, if they're not forcing it out, they are, but if they're not, let me see. It's starting to force it.
I know it's your first day, but we'll give you till tomorrow.
No one gets an easy question on their first day.
All right. Any other questions or comments for Sergeant Schuler? Thank you very much, Sergeant. I appreciate you being here. Look forward to working with you.
Of course.
Thank you. Next up, Deputy Trump. Hello, Deputy. How you doing?
How are you, sir? Good evening, everyone. Deputy Trump, Pinellas County Sheriff's Office, and I do the boat enforcement for the city of Beller Beach. Um, it's been a busy month all around, but for the most part, um, we've had a good month as far as compliance and everything. Pretty much like it was last month. I mean, most of it is trying to chase around the ground cover and long grass and everything else, trying to do compliance, and just a lot of people cutting the grass and trimming their yards in the pan. Where we're still running into the problem, some of these houses are still vacant. We're having a little bit harder time. But as we are tattying up and getting a hold of these residents, and we're striving to please, you know, make, get a lawn service and get everything, you know, on a regular basis, get it cut down. And we're starting to see a lot more compliance with that, and people understand that we know what to do with that. So basically, um, for this last month, I had forty new cases, as you can see in your charts and all the notes and everything else that you're probably better off just reading on a Sunday morning or something, because there's a lot of notes in there. A lot of this also has to do with, you know, it may not sound, a whole lot of stops, we have to understand. We did close thirty-two cases so far. I actually closed a few more this last couple of days, which are reflected on this one. And I had fifty-eight follow-ups. So with that, um, we're, you know, just trying to mainly do that. We're still doing a lot of permit checks on places that are being built and making sure that they are in compliance with the permits. Uh, we did find one that they were starting a C-ball project, and they did not have any permits or anything else. And I also work in conjunction with the county on that. So if we find something like that, we also count, or get a little of our county investigators, and they will come out and they back up, and they investigate the companies, they put immediate fines on them, and they help back this up out here dramatically. So that helps a lot. So we haven't had too many of those right now. So a lot, just a few environmental places. We're trying to keep the construction places cleaned up, some places where they're building new homes, and making sure that they have proper messers and that they're trying to clean up. So we're trying to follow up that. There's just a lot of follow-up to do on those. So, um, any questions?
Counselor?
Yes, Mr. Banker. I really appreciate the interest in that vessel out, out by our window and sinking. I'm sorry to worry about this is going to become the dunny, edge of the world, where people say, hey, I can't sell my boat, so I'm just going to park it here in the Beller Beach area. Is there anything, I mean, this is probably the lone area. This is no reflection on here. Anything we can do?
Problem that you have is that nobody owns the boat, you know, and it depends if they own the bottom rights or not. And that, that has to do with landlines of the city and everything else, whether it's basic accounting or state, um, bottom land, and technically, nobody owns the water, so they're not committing anything illegal by being out there and being angry. Um, they're, they are, um, between FWC, between the Coast Guard, between the sheriff's office, they are making many checks on this. I know it's been brought up before as far as, uh, there's a sailboat out here that moves, and you know, is it dumping overboard or however. I know that they told me, because we inquired about that, they said the Coast Guard has boarded that boat twice and made sure it was in compliance, and they haven't found any violations on it for, at this point. So that is actually the second time that boat's been addressed. Uh, they started a case on it, made a Daryl case on it, um, probably a little over a month ago. The owner went out there, he brought the boat back into compliance, more or less, because they worked with him a little bit, because they actually saw that he had the engines out of it, and they were allowing him a little bit of time, because he said, I just need to get the engines done, and we'll put the engines back in, and it'll be out of there. Well, then it started sinking. So now it is sunk and sitting on the bottom, but they're well aware of it, you know, they do have it tagged for it as a Daryl vessel, so it comes back in compliance within those thirty days for those scheduled to be removed.
Thank you.
So it, it, they're working on it.
On that topic?
One second. On that particular boat, is it already tagged for removal, or is it still in the watching list?
Well, it is tagged as a Daryl vessel. So with that process, um, which we've mentioned before, they have the owner, they get a hold of the owner, they make sure that he has a citation. He has thirty days to get the boat back in compliance. Uh, he'll still be fined, but other than that, after that, then they will remove the boat. They'll schedule it through state funds and everything else to remove the boat and take it out and crush it up, and then they go after the owner again for any fines.
So we've been talking about this boat for a while now. What, if, there's a timeline that he does nothing. What is that timeline where, okay, they come to get it?
It's, it's roughly thirty days for the actual case itself. Um, after that, it just depends on the funds and being able to schedule the removal of the boat, which can take another.
Okay, I'm a little bit of a wreck.
Can take another thirty.
When, when was the case actually, when does the clock start, or has it already started?
On this one? Oh, it's already started. Um, I didn't write up the email, actually.
Yeah, because we talked about this, this, we think the boat last month, so thirty days is out of bounds, so I'm just curious.
Well, again, it's, uh, it's the same thing. This is the second time it's been tagged, because he brought it back into compliance and satisfied the sheriff's office once.
Right.
So they had to re-tag. Um, bear with me one second, and I will.
Obviously, it's a hot topic for Beller Beach, because we're all getting emails daily.
Well, you know, we're getting, we're getting calls.
Oh, sure.
Is it one-eleven? No, never mind. That's how I.
We're, we're having. So, uh, the new case was initiated on July twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth?
Uh, July twenty-sixth. That's, that's what I, that's what I got from Sergeant Bianco.
And it was sunk like three weeks before that, so this is a very slow process.
I'm aware of that, so, and that's what I told him, so unfortunately, that apparently is where they started, on July twenty-sixth, and there's a case number on it.
Hopefully, it understands that this is pulled out of your hands. I'm sorry. I'm good. Before I let you speak, Kim, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Feel right ahead.
On, and adding on the topic of the marine issues, how do you deal with the environmental questions, such as, do they have proper sewage capabilities? Are they dumping into the hard waters?
They're not allowed to dump into the waters. So again, like the Coast Guard, just using that other vessel as an example, the Coast Guard has, um, boarded it twice, and everything's locked up in his systems, let me put it that way, have been in compliance. Um, I know, I don't know if he uses that service, but there is a service in Pinellas County that they actually go around with large, and they will pump people's vessels on, obviously, for the feed, but it's apparently quite an lucrative, um, business, so they don't know if he uses that system, that service or not. But the Coast Guard's been on this boat twice for a compliance check, and they said everything is checked out, so.
So if someone doesn't have like a, a, a proper holding tank for black water, is there an assumption that they're dumping, or how is that dealt with?
Well, again, if they don't have proper holding tanks, they, they have to have a holding tank on the boat in order to, you know, deal with any type of toiletries or black water. So it has to have, by law, they have to have some type of a holding tank.
Okay, good.
So, this way.
Mr. Ober.
I was just trying to put the timeline in my head, so the citation or the case was opened on July twenty-sixth, you said?
That's what you said.
Which means the thirty days would be August twenty-sixth, so we're saying that August twenty-sixth would be the point where they would talk about scheduling the removal.
Yes.
So it could be.
If he has not brought, if he has not raised the boat and brought it back into compliance, they will schedule it for him.
But that could be a couple months.
No, never. It's usually not that. Usually, I would say another, you know, fourteen days to twenty-one days possibly. It depends on the removal service, because they contract that. And it also depends on funds with, you know, they have to get funds from the state and through the county in order to have it. But usually, the removals have been going pretty well, so I wouldn't say another couple months, no.
Great.
But I will keep up with that on, with Sergeant Bianco, so he knows it's a hot topic.
Thank you. All right. Any more questions or comments for that meeting?
Thank you very much, sir. I appreciate you being here. And by the way, thank you for working diligently to make Beller Beach home again. Thank you.
All right.
Officer German, I think one more comment. Um, I really want a compliment report. I really liked the informant of the report and the details of the.
It's working well.
Thank you very much.
Kyle and I, I'm sorry, I apologize. The city manager and I were still taking a few bugs out of it once in a while, but it, it seems to be working pretty well, and it does provide you, again, a lot of reading. Um, but if you sit down and read, you'll see all the notes now and all the follow-ups that have been done on the cases, so it gives you a lot of information that you can now see of what's actually going on with these cases. So I like it, too. It's been pretty beneficial.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Hey, Deputy? All right. Next up is a presentation from the Pinellas Sun Coast Fire and Rescue District. Chief Grimes, welcome, sir.
Hi, welcome. Welcome. Regards for my commission as well. Um, we had a, a month where we had sixteen emergency calls at Beller Beach. Four of those were fired, and twelve of those were EMS. When I say fired, they're minor fire incidents, no major incidents that I would have to report.
You say twelve per units?
Twelve EMS.
So you gave me fifteen to begin with, or?
Correct. Fifteen total calls.
Okay, so one of them was.
Say that right. Sixteen total calls. Sorry. Sixteen total calls. Four fired and twelve EMS.
All right.
Yes. So our, uh, our commission, again, sends their regards, uh, they're very engaged. Our firefighters are trying to stay cool in the summer. Um, we, if you were driving here and you were coming up from Indian Rock Beach, we've got Indian Rock Beach closed, and it's been closed all afternoon, Indian Rock Beach. Gulf Boulevard closed, uh, Fifteenth Avenue, but there's a gas leak there. So it's a good opportunity to see the, you know, out in the heat and the sun, the guys are in there here, and they're happy to stand by while the gas company tries to make that repair, contract their gas line there. But, um, so, uh, you know, the fire calls, and when these, these gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen are called into action, um, you know, it really is a monumental task for them to perform. So, um, like I said, twelve EMS calls. Um, our trucks are in great shape. We're fully staffed. Um, we've got no real personnel issues, um, from a capital or a station standpoint. We, uh, we actually go tomorrow or this week to get our final approval for our mainland station. It breaks ground in September, which is awesome. Um, and that was my number one focus when I started. Our, we've been moving to a temporary location, which is a little by the timeout restaurant in Oakhurst, so they moved into an old doctor's office, so they're going to be in that, operating as a fire station temporarily for the next, probably about twelve months. Turns our focus to the north, to this area. I did have a meeting with the county recently, where we just discussed our mutual coverage of this area, the Bellerers and, you know, the north side of Indian Rock Beach. And it's a known problem from the county, from an EMS and fire perspective, that there's no way to meet appropriate response times for medical or for fire. And so I met with EMS, and I, um, we're the fire district, and we're by charter, our power to fix the fire problem, and we're going to, we're going to do that. That's my number one focus now, is how do we fix the response time challenges, you know, in this area? And so we have, as we mentioned before, we bought a property on the north side of Indian Rock Beach, and we'll construct a station, you know, at some point, but right now, we're trying to all figure out how we fix that together. I've asked them from an EMS perspective, because I'm willing to put the vehicle up here, um, the people on the vehicle, I've asked them if they want to participate in this EMS problem, um, response time problem. So, um, more to follow on that as we meet with them. I've, uh, I have proposed, and I just talked to the mayor and city manager about it, a summit of all the cities. We serve four, for four cities. Uh, our fire district, your fire department serves four different cities, so, um, I'm wanting to put together a summit where we can actually get together and talk in more detail about the service that we provide. For example, we're just going into hurricane season, and our hurricane plan is, is refined, and, uh, they've done an amazing job, um, based on last year, you know, what we learned from last year. So we've got a very comprehensive plan for pre, post hurricane recovery. We're working with the sheriff's department, actually countywide, on search and rescue and high water response capabilities and those kind of things. And so there's obviously more than EMS and fire to it, so, um, so I'm proposing this summit, and we'll get an invite out. We're going to do one, like the beach mayor, the city manager, and one of our commissioners, and, you know, therefore, we don't have a, we won't have a public address, we're only represented from the state. Um, and, uh, so that's, this north station, the Indian Rock Beach station, we still have our mitigating, like everybody else, on post-storm, so we finally are, feel like we're making some progress on, um, mitigating. Our first floor, that station is, is basically unoccupable, so we're working on getting that kind of prepared, so.
Any questions? Counselor? Any questions? Very excited to hear about the groundbreaking next month. That's very cool. I can't wait to see it in action and looking forward to better coverage. I appreciate you being here this evening, and, uh, I'm sure that city manager and I will, we'll get together and we'll try to come up with a date where we may, we have our little meeting, and we, uh, we apply to the public. Okay. So I'll have the temporary location up here. Sure. Thank you. Thank you. Good night. All right. Now we are up to city attorney for, Mr. Trask, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Over the last couple of weeks, I've been working with the city manager and a couple of other committees. I just want to tell you about those. First of all, just finished drafting a temporary construction easement for the property located at one fifteen, one point five Eighteenth Street. That's for the purpose of giving access. It's very valuable. I have provided those documents to the city manager. We have failed to update you as to whether or not they have signed yet. Been working on the lot line adjustment issues for the property on, on the Lotto Tribe. Let me get you a speaker. Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. Um, so working on the lot line adjustment issue for the property on the Lotto Tribe. Also, I've recently provided to you by email the draft, synthetic turf regulations that FDPE is discussing. There's not a whole lot of meat there, and it's kind of destroying the way that it's currently prepared, but I did provide to you the current draft that, that I have been provided with. Last thing is want to let you know that Kyle and I are working on some code enforcement matters to make sure that those code enforcement cases continue to go forward. I would like to answer any questions about anything else that.
Counselor, any questions for the city attorney?
Where are we at on the letter to Beller Shore's and the gate access?
So I think that where it was left off was is that the city manager was going to confirm that the gates were actually locked. I know the council member has mentioned that, but it was going to be a follow-up by the city manager. I'm not sure if that has been accomplished yet, but I have not sent out either, so.
So to my knowledge, they were locked, and then after we had a meeting, they haven't been locked since. The locks are still attached, correct?
Yes.
So are we going to proceed with a letter to them telling them our interests are not to lock these gates ever?
So if you want us to continue, we can do that, but, um, I'm not sure, you know, what kind of teeth you want to play into it, because of the fact that it was something that happened in the past, and, and I assume it's not going to happen in the future, but, um, I am aware of the lawsuit that has been threatened. I will tell you, um, our law firm is going to be, the law firm that will be handling that litigation, um, and actually with Beller Shore as, as, as our client. As you know, we represent Florida legacy, and Florida National Insurance Trust, and so we are the panel attorneys for this area, and so they have received notice of that possible claim. Uh, there has been no lawsuit actually filed, and I'm aware of that as of this date. I want to let you know that we, we will be.
Well, that's, that's what I'm saying. There hasn't been a lawsuit filed, and I hope there isn't a lawsuit filed, but I think we should put on the record, create a paper trail, that those gates should not be locked ever, for any reason unless the governor is in the right to do it totally. Because if they had the lock dangling there, for what purpose to lock, I don't know.
Probably to make sure the people that are driving by, that don't have the right to go into it, to make it look like it's locked for the purposes of keeping those people out. I'm not sure.
It kept everybody out?
Well, it's locked. It's not locked today.
Right. Well, it's not locked today, it was locked last night, but who knows, it's gonna be locked next week. That's my argument.
Yeah, my take on it is, right now, they're not doing anything. I would prefer not to go to bear because I think that they would, that would provoke them to actually lock the gate. I don't know, I could be wrong, but I would say that they probably realize that they made an error by locking that gate and between the dialogue that we had in our meeting and the dialogue in the letter that they received from Attorney Manzo, they probably don't wanna go there. So that would be my stance on it, but the council, this council speaks as a whole and so I would be willing to entertain everyone's thoughts on that.
Well, as long as there's no current violation, frankly, I would rather spend our limited legal resources on some big ticket items and that would be the next thing that I would ask about is to satisfy negotiations, common demand letter to Harvard.
Well, what's the legal question, or what's the answer to the legal question that they have the right to lock those gates?
So I think that, you know, the research that I've done so far, they have, it's their land, they have the right to control it. The city, only the residents of the city on the east side of Gulf Boulevard have the right, a license to use it. So there are certain circumstances, I think that they have the right to possibly lock the gate. I don't know what those mean at this point, but they do own that land. This, the city does not own that, they have a license to use it.
Well, it's the only access to the wet sand by our four residents?
Other than the four foot east when set along each portion of those condos of Indian Rocks.
Well, that would be trust base. What you're talking about, I'm talking about the area of Bella Shores, 19th Street, South 28th, Indian Rocks. That's the only way we can get on the beach. So.
Reason why he's not coming first in my camp? Okay, I know that when I did my drive-through with the city manager of the city, I may not be, you know.
Outside of all.
Exactly, knowing where all those easements are in relation to the access points, I know that he did show me the wall, so.
Well, what I'm saying is, there's only three access points from First Street to Nineteenth Street and the wet sand is the public's right to enjoy. And if you lock me out, I don't have that right to enjoyment in it. And I, and you can't lock me out at two o'clock in the morning, you can't lock me out anytime.
So that's obviously gonna be the legal issue. And I don't necessarily agree that it can't ever be locked. So I understand the position that you have, I understand the arguments that you made, I've kind of did a little of the research, I pulled all the documents that Randy has on that, so I know the issues and I don't necessarily agree, so.
Well, you're saying that you're gonna defend Bella Shores if there is a suit, right? So you have to abstain from all this, I guess?
There's no conflict at this point, so if there gets to be a conflict, this city needs to move forward against Bella Shore, then yes, we would have to step back.
From what, Bella Shores or Bella Beach?
So that would be the determination made at that time when it's done. I don't know the answer to that question right now.
I mean, she can't represent both parties here, I mean.
Yep, that's what I'm saying. So question is, shall I write the letter or not write the letter?
Well, I'm trying to survey the council, but we keep getting a rocky.
Good night. I would agree that no current violation is taking place, that letter should be postponed, but I would say that we should be on the record that if it happens again, that the letter is fair enough.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes, sir, thank you. First, I'd like to thank Councilmember Bender for bringing it up at the last meeting to make it aware to everyone, but at this point, based on the information that the city manager gave us, that probably based in the discussions we've had and the way that Councilmember Bender brought up, they are not doing it now, so I am not in favor of writing it down.
Alright, and Councilmember Welling, are you out there? Rogers, are you there?
There you go. Yeah, no, it's strange, I'm not able to unmute through the, through the, yeah, but yeah, no, I'm also in favor of, you know, postponing, you know, a letter until we, you know, until there's another incident that requires us to go ahead and send the letter.
Alright, thank you very much. I will also add that what I was told by one of the deputies was that they were instructed to open the gate or unlock the gate on that one particular day, an hour before sunrise and lock it an hour after sunset. So not that that's going to, you know, make it wide open twenty-four seven like most people would prefer, but it's, I think it's really not much different than what they were already doing. They were closing the gate every night and they were opening the gate every morning. The only difference is, is that there was a lock on that one particular day. I'm not defending them, I'm just saying, you know, stating facts. So all things to consider, but right now, I think it's the general will of the council not to send a letter. Any other questions or comments?
I raised a question. So I am just interested in what the gate, the open and closed, I think it's more of the lock than it's done. There are a lot of times at ten o'clock around, I walk to the beach and I slide a little bit and I walk to the beach and I close the gate and I leave and I do the exact same reverse. So I don't have comment, nothing to access, it's the locking, that is really, I think, a critical conversation here. The other thing that runs into this is the idea that we can need to have these kind of headshots with Bella Shores. So I would love to figure out how do we come to a kumbaya between all of these issues.
Good luck with that. It's never gonna happen, I just, never gonna happen. Alright, any other questions or comments for the city attorney?
Yes, I had asked, where are we in response to the demand letter to Harvard Contracting?
So I'm not hearing that, my partner, Robert Schimacher, the firm is handling it and he's been working directly with the city manager, so I would ask the city manager to respond to that.
Harvard Contracting, I just thought into it, they're willing to correct each one of the file locations, so we're gonna provide them with the instructions to do so, but I'll cover that in the manager report.
Thank you.
Alright, well, speaking of the city manager report, Mr. Reifler, you're up.
Okay, so, yeah, I got an update from Gemini Engineering today for valves and the other projects that they're working on, so let's start with those. We were successful today at the Seventh Street. Check valve, we needed the seal completely around that valve. We had to work around the tanker truck operation that's happening on Seventh and Eighth Street currently. If residents are not aware, there was a sewer main break in Indian Rocks Beach and until they fix that break, they have to physically truck all the sewage to the plant using tanker trucks and they're being lined up on Seventh and Eighth Street, filled and trucked away. And it's happening all day and all night. I have asked the staging for the multiple trucks, because you know, sometimes there's four or five trucks that try to get away from the residential houses. Well, they're just standing by because they do produce some noise and bad lights. They kind of dislike the tanker trucks because they're using the pump on those stations, which to pump from the lift stations instead of bringing any pump truck, it's a much quieter operation, so that's a lot of your scene done this way. So anyways, we were working around and we got it down to four inches of water, which was important also. Public Works were able to get the vacuum truck briefly in there, well, kind of move their trucks and all the time, suck out the last little bit of water and then the public works were doing a good hydro seal around the hell valve, so we have a nice layer of concrete, field valve is secured and in place. And from the video camera that was done last week, Gemini has reviewed that the Eighth Street pipes, they recommend, we do a CIPV lining of those pipes to repair infiltration. I can get more information on how bad infiltration is, curiously. We didn't know it originally, but at this juncture, we feel that those pipes need to be at least repaired and lined so that we make sure that the check valve is looking correctly on Seventh and Eighth Street. Part of that is the segment goes to the Eighth Street outfall, that is twelve inches in some areas, eighteen in others. So as part of repairing that pipe, we want to make sure that we keep the maximum capacity because it, over time, with seawall replacement and the velocity overall circumvent of the seawall. So that is pending. Gemini has given me a proposal to finish the pipe work on Eighth Street, that will tie into what we did on Seventh to have everything function, we can prevent the backflow. And then we move to the BMP project, which is our largest stormwater project, which each of those, of that project, to start from, we're gonna remove five valve valves and all of the valves that are not working currently, the plan, and I've asked Gemini to start with Ninth Street, so they're gonna detail out the cutting, repairing, patching instructions for Ninth Street specifically and then what they want to do is provide them to the superintendent and then have some reading follow-up to make sure that he clearly understands what he needs to do. And then if all goes right, it's successful, and then we move on to the next valve. The next, it would either be Twelfth and Thirteenth, they're connected, or it'd be Fourth Street, but the idea is that within the next two, three weeks that we get those valves back in because they were pulled out to repair the pipes and then you go back so they prevent the backflow. And then following Eighteenth Street, Attorney Trask talked about the easements, we have two easements repaired. I should not have an issue with the one property, but the larger house, which is 125 Eighteenth Street, has a lot more room and I need to send that letter out and find out what response is being reached. I think that it'll, you know, the workload is a cooperate. And then the swale, I keep pressing, Harvard, we had a valve for that swale, but they're not doing it, it's the best valve, and they wanted to reach out to Richard, who's a manufacturer, again, so I keep telling Barba, you know, they want to run the modeling, I done with the board, we need that swale installed. But again, they just wanted to be, I guess, get a guy to help for the location. The pump station, we had the pre-bid meeting last Friday and we did not have anyone show up. The plan is to put an end on this week, to provide more information about pump, possibly extend the deadline by a week. We just want to jump in, it's interest, we're gonna be reaching out to more and more lift station, about construction crews, I'm pretty afraid of any experience with some of the pump setup, it may not be stormwater, but we need to find someone who's done those type of projects, who's qualified for the work. So that, that is my new valve workflow. And then just to remind you, other than that pump street project, we're submitting any, for say, a Florida grant application to possibly get some funding, but the Gemini is also working on the Twenty Second Street Bridge, which I mentioned within our budget meetings. We have more advanced scouring on that bridge, so they are designing a project, they're in communication with FPT and, you know, drawing out plans to repair the bridge, but they're also gonna work on a comparison cost effectiveness of repair project versus what, you know, what we're facing with the replacement of the bridge. So that's something we need to consider, but that is a larger, honestly, expense to the city, but they also would like to survey grant allocation for this bridge project as well, so they're working on that. I think that was everything there, we're working outside of, we're pulling for a master plan and we did have that survey on Bay Shore, but I got pushed back. The neighbor that built our new house, we were experiencing a lot of puddling, they had a landscaping crew do some kind of drain in the yard, right next to where the puddle was and it's staying really dry.
Excellent.
So they took that on themselves, but it actually is working, so I wanna watch it when the rains hit up and see if it continues to work. If it is, then maybe we just, we have the survey for Bay Shore, which we're gonna have to do some stormwater projects on and some street resourcing, maybe we just wait a little longer if we don't get the take actually on that. We jumped back to. So, not too much change in the demolition side, Elevate Florida projects. We did get, I've got one more off of no contact list, so now I have six letters, which I'm gonna send this week and I think that will, a code violation, I'm gonna sure get some action on these. Duke, I did an update, they met today, I was out working on the valve, they wanna call another meeting for design questions on Phase Two on Monday, I told them they'd fly in or sooner. Spectrum, I think they get an update, they are scheduled to be done in October, whatever you may need to, that'll be a slip too. And we're still up to do our next planning, planning is our board meeting, eating earlier than the end of August, we have the shuttle and our members' health status and then the, I covered the pump station, we're continuing to work with the Parker integration board to plan the seventy-fifth anniversary. Aaron Lands and Prey Services, he's designing the T-shirts, he can actually start to look really nice. We still rest all of those at two tentative dates, which are Saturday, is October twenty-fifth and November fifteenth. And then I updated you through email, but we did, we did get one bid in for the one thousand one seater repair work, the contractor was not qualified, did not meet the qualifications, which I think that we did not perceive any qualified bids. So that opens up, any work that we do decide that you can be awarded to a qualified contractor. But Mayor was talking about it earlier, we talked about having a public meeting discussion for that, possibility of some kind of temporary station operating from that location and I don't know, it's too early, but I was proposing the August twentieth. We actually have a few residents from that area, so.
Okay, alright. So before I go to council for questions and comments on the city manager's report, I just wanna do a recap. Did you say that Seventh, the Seventh Street check valve is repaired?
That is in place and sealed?
In place and sealed, alright, thank you, thank you, thank you. Alright, and then the Eighth Street lining, I thought that we actually scoped all of these whenever we were doing the initial, it wasn't, it wasn't a problem at that time, so I wonder if this is from the storm, that maybe breached it or something broke down?
I'm trying to remember, hold on, I messed up, there was people on the server and I'm gonna go back to.
For some reason, we didn't, we didn't think that a liner was needed and now, I mean, there's no choice in the matter because things leaking all over the place. And then you said that there's still five check valves that are not installed at this time?
Yes, it's Ninth, Twelfth, Thirteenth, Fourth and Eighteenth.
Right, and Ninth will be your trial balloon to see if you can get them back in?
Yes.
Alright, once that's in, is it possible that they can ramp up their manpower and sign the handys, they pack the rest of them?
It'll depend on the water levels.
Okay.
It doesn't make sense, I keep saying, I really was driving.
Okay. Alright, and I just wanna confirm that because a lot of people are asking about that. Counsel?
On the Eighth Street, that's, I'm sorry, on the Eighth Street pipes that are leaking, they're leaking. are leaking, they're leaking at the joints, right?
Again, I can get all the information on them, so yes.
Um, there's only so many ways you can install a concrete pipe, it's generally with a neoprene gasket, you slide it in with dope, and you go. Did they, did, did the, I, I looked at the video, I couldn't see if there was a gasket ripped, if there was a gasket at all in there, um, those pipes, the matter is, is the scorns, um, causing the leaky, there's pipes that have been leaking before that resident, so they complained since early last year about that, but, um, Gemini or the, the previous name company, they were the construction manager on this job, or, okay, we may, we might really seriously want to consider finding another engineering company, because the shot of workmanship they did at the other end of the city last year, with the valley curves that they allow, with eight-foot bubble level, um, thrown inside down with pavements and all that, I, I don't think they have the construction mentality, and I don't know how we're going to line these concrete pipes unless we're going to put in a, um, plastic liner all the way down and just keep shoving it down, because if, if all you're going to do is coat it on the inside, and it's water pressure, that's like taking caulk and keeping the water pressure, putting the caulk when the water's coming in, this way, caulk hasn't been on the outside where the pressure's coming in, so is this going to be another fruitless adventure that we're going to spend a lot of money on? Isn't there a warranty on these, these pipes are only five years old? I'm not blaming you, you weren't city manager at the time, but.
No, the pipes that, these, they're supposed to never be replaced. Those are old pipes.
So you never replaced them on Eighth Street, they didn't replace them anymore?
Because he dug the whole street up. They dug that out of the park, and they didn't replace that, right? Because that was a new connection, it connected them differently.
I was on my council at the time, and my inquiry was, if you want to replace pipes, you replace older pipes, um, so those, those pipes are fifty years old, or older, I think or older. Concrete has an deterioration of like seventy-five years. Alright.
Thank you, Mayor, for asking for those summary questions, that was helpful for me. Regarding Ninth Street, um, what exactly repairs are they going to make, making?
I'm going to cut two to three inches inside of the concrete for the liner, so that the valve meets the concrete versus the liner, and the same size valve will fit, but they also have to cut the bubble hole in the liner, turn the cable valve to get in, so they have to cut that out and then patch that area.
So have we examined the rest of the street to see if there are any problems with this liner and filling up more of the tight capacity?
They, they analyzed all the videos that were done after each liner, and they did a, and put a whole report on it, so they, they have, um, and they talked to all manufacturers of those products.
And the conclusion is?
The conclusion is that it's structurally getting tagged, um, it's hardened, there's no, there's no, um, there's no worry of it breaking down, they looked at it, aware of the movement of water, um, they weren't concerned with the, the loss of any kind of capacity of the pipe, only because it's not a pressurized pipe, so it might represent two to three percent of the total area of the pipe that's open that is impeded by that fold, it's very little, it, it wouldn't matter if you were setting pressure through a line, but if it's just grabbing in there, you know?
Is this, when we're talking about the folds in the, in the liner, so is this something like you've got a round pipe, you spray some stuff in that was supposed to be round around it, but now it's not, that there's something like, so?
It's like a tube that they blast, so the inside of walls of the pipe, and it hardens.
Right, but if there's an obstruction, so let's say part of it bulges out and shouldn't have been, so there might be water that flows through it, but it's wooden debris and other things perhaps catch on that and start filling the pipe with an obstruction?
It, like, the fold, it, it's not like a obstruction that's further than it stops, or try to like catch, it's, it's almost like a bubble fold throughout the whole pipe, it's like a, um, it's like, it's like a rib on that liner that's normally smooth, but it bobbled up.
It goes the entire street?
It, it goes most of the liner, yes.
And is the liner in the entire street?
Uh, the liner, at that point was from that junction box right by, uh, Harbor and Ninth Street, that intersection, and then down to the outfall.
It's extended, is it?
Yes.
And that the rest of the street doesn't have a liner?
It didn't.
Okay, so with the check valve that is, is being put on, it's the one that, that was used before?
Yes.
And did that work well before?
The valve itself, we felt worked well, but we, the reason that line is who thought the water was getting around the valve into the pipe, so the liner on the inside of the pipe, we can't get into it.
But the pump itself functions correctly?
The valve?
The check valve, yes, excuse me.
So the valve, when it was in, it, we, we thought the valve was working correctly, we were cleaning it and retaining it, but we couldn't explain why it was getting around the valve, other than the pipe was compromised through the seawall.
Okay, and when you mentioned that Harvard responded vaguely, and are they assuming responsibility for the repair, and is that at their cost?
Yes, and they're, they're, as soon as we give them what we want, they're going to come and do it.
Right, and so do we have an idea what the timeline for that is?
I've asked it, we've provided instructions to my line to follow up, you know, hopefully that we, I think we're responsible.
So Ninth, excuse me, Seventh Street is finished, totally finished?
The, the valve is finished.
And Eighth Street still needs a, an out of replacement?
So Eighth Street, it has old pipes that need, that are ready to be lined, and it also has a, um, never an outfall segment because two residential projects in Eighth Street, um, it comes out in twelve inches, um, but there's parts of that that are larger than that, so we feel that when the seawall was done, we got, uh, sleeves with a smaller pipe, which can happen when, you know, lots of what's happening with contractors, you obviously, you don't know when you start buying in the middle of the winter, but now that we're there, we want to get the money back.
And what's the proposed order of the work?
Which work, uh, if you lay a budget.
Oh, so you have Eighth Street, Ninth Street, and then you're going to move north?
So as far as those routes, I need to go back over ones there, I'm going to do Ninth Street, and then either it's going to be Fourth Street or Twelfth and Thirteenth, but Twelfth and Thirteenth are like Seventh and Eighth, but they're connected. Um, so if you do one, you have to call it there somewhere.
I'm sorry, where's Eighth Street in that?
Eighth, Eighth Street, we just learned about when we were videoing to find out what's going on with Seventh and Eighth. So we just learned about that Eighth Street needs, you know, mining, needs work out for the outfall, and I've asked Gemini to, to draw up some information for the project.
It's a lining, not a check valve, correct?
It's, it's a combination.
Combination.
Be on the valve, or is it going to be solid? Yes, we own a twelve-inch valve, I'm not sure what we're going to end up with, um, being able to look into how we can enlarge that pipe.
Let's see, uh, Councilmember Wellings, is his hand up?
Oh, did I press the hand up? But anyway, yeah, this is on, he's on next, if you're ready, are you done?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, yeah, yeah, Todd, so on Seventh Street, the check valve you put in, uh, planned here, you were able to get that sealed up, were you able to test it to see if the check valve was holding okay?
No.
Or is that going to come with the next, uh, high tide or something?
Yeah, that, that was going to analyze tomorrow.
Okay.
Got it, alright. I, I, I don't, I think we can still check it if I look at the tides, um, around the trucks, and we should be able to tell. I got to confirm with, uh, Wind River that they definitely have that plug installed on the underground ball.
Right, okay, so that's over, that's next, so on Eighth, until we finish, or until we work on the lining, and, you know, both on the, from outside in front of my house up to the, to Frank's and, and, uh, those, those outfalls, that's where you're going to put the new liner in, and I know, I get the impression, so there you're going to put the, the plug in, right? That's going to be a temporary thing for now, make sure everything else is working, is that the case? I know they took it out for the video, you don't know if they put it back?
I didn't, they were supposed to, I just, they spent, we were, like I said, we had to get the truck in there, and I need to confirm that, but I just want to, um, check that, since the water's coming from that direction.
Okay.
But they, they, yes, they were supposed to, so I, I would assume it is in place.
Okay, alright, so if that's in place, then at least we can kind of rule out anything on Eighth Street on the outflow coming in, but you're telling me that you're thinking, like I, like I wrote to you, that I thought that the, the liner for the outfall section, I think, was in, whatever's in there, whether it's concrete or liner or what, but it looks like it's in pretty good shape, but you're, you're not necessarily highlighting that there's any problem with the shape of it, it's more that the size is smaller than you'd like now, if for some reason it's shrunk in size through some sort of construction work in the past, and, so you think it's smaller, so if that's the case, what are you thinking to do when, to make it larger, are we ripping up a home too?
I, I don't think we can rip up homes, um, but I just wanted, if it was larger, where did it get smaller, and maybe do we have an opportunity to make it larger, I need to kind of figure that out.
Okay.
And I haven't, they recommended we replace these pipes based on what they saw, I realize, but we can get more information if we're questioning, or if they can get more later, why, and tell us what these ones are going to be relying.
Okay, okay, yeah, I definitely got the impression when I was talking to the video guys on Eighth Street, basically from, I guess, the beginning of the outfall section, which is right outside from my house, to, up to Frank's house, that area, the guy was telling me, all the joints were leaking, there's also these little, kind of commented, there's these little places on the tops of each pipe, that's where they lift the pipes, and they put them in, and they crane them in and out, and I guess there's some piece there that can break and fall apart, and he said they're leaking from there too.
Yeah.
So there's multiple places that he said it was leaking from, or whatever, that's, we'll deal with that with the lining, then when that gets coming around, so, okay, I would understand that, so, and I think I got that idea from Kim's questions, that you got it, your rough timing on Ninth Street was a week or two type thing, you know, or something like that, is that, is that timeframe, we're talking about something like less than a month or something to get Ninth Street?
Yes, I did, like, I, I, I looked at the, the update email from Gemini today, and I responded with the instructions, and Ninth Street asked if we could have it to them tomorrow, so I got to give that response, but my, I hope to give it to them tomorrow, I'm going to meet with them this week, um, to get that going.
Okay, alright, and then pretty soon after that, I would say, I think we're going to be able to pull off most of these in a, in a few weeks, maybe a month or two, or something like that, okay? Alright, I think that was my questions, thank you.
I have a, I have a comment on the schedule, which is, uh, I, I think this has gone for so long now, people are getting so, um, disappointed, I mean, is a nicer word to say, uh, with the repairs on all of these various streets, I think that it would be probably in your best interest, city manager, to formulate a tentative schedule and publish it, so that, so that everyone can go to the website and go, oh, okay, he's at least planning on attacking my street, uh, in the next two weeks, something like that. So, in that way, uh, we at least look like we are accountable for, for, uh, what's going on, uh, throughout the city, especially with the, uh, record heat and impending doom that seems to be, um, the upcoming, or the, the current hurricane season, uh, so that would, I would greatly appreciate that.
Yeah, I'd like to add to, that's a great idea, thanks.
Do we have any other questions or comments for the city manager? Yes, sir, twice, Mayor.
So Kim, um, I may have misunderstood, if I did, I, I apologize, but I just wanted to sum up a couple things that may make it more clear, so let's use Twelfth and Thirteenth Streets, take two minutes, Twelfth and Thirteenth Streets as an example, when you start having problems, and step one is the video, to see what everything looks like underground, so step two, if you, let's assume the decision was made that, hey, these pipes need to be replaced, they're not working properly, so you can open cut, which is typically the most cost effective, when you come in, tear up the streets, open cut, take the pipes out and place them, that's going to last for a very long time, however, when you get to the end of the street, where you've taken the outfall pipe, maybe the last fifty, sixty feet, you're on some of its property, so typically you don't want to tear up their yard or walls, or whatever the case may be, so that's where you look at other options, like cure-in-place pipe, there's various types of those you can do, you put, as, as Councilmember Baker talked about, a pipe inside a pipe, and you're going to listen fine with that, so there's different approaches you can use, but the reason it's only used there is because you can't open cut that, you're not going to cut through somebody's yard or home or wall, so that's where that comes in play, so that just kind of sums up the different progression that you go through, and why the cure-in-place pipe comes in play, so I just wanted to try to clear that up, if that was something that was on here. Well, my real, my real statement has to do, our question has to do with Ninth Street pump design, and I think, Todd, you mentioned that we had a bid, um, review meeting on Friday, on Friday, and, and nobody attended, I mean, my question is, in our, in our, um, bid information, is that considered a mandatory pre-bid?
Not mandatory, okay.
Okay, but we still had, nobody showed up.
Yeah, right.
A lot of times organizations would use a mandatory, and therefore the only firms that can bid on the project want that, those construction companies that attended, period. Um, there's value in that sometimes, to know who's participating, but, uh, you know, it's, it's kind of a smaller project, so having it not be mandatory is probably a good choice, but, uh, it's not a good sign, if nobody shows up.
We're thinking of, uh, again, if we put out an offer, another, um, pre-bid, sure.
Okay, alright, just wanted to make sure that was managed, so, thank you.
Councilmember Baker, you were going to say something?
Well, I was just going to comment on what Mr. Roberts was saying about using scope, the problem with these pipes, you can put a scope in the pipe, but you don't know what's underneath the pipe, so if it's groundwater coming up, there's intrusion coming, where's that intrusion coming from, and how much of that intrusion is underneath those pipes, so even if you put a liner in there, are the pipes going to actually just sink? And you may have to pull the holes through the pipe, uh, I don't know, I mean, wh- where is a, where is a disaster when it gets underneath those pipes, and it just eats away, eats away, and then you get trucks going up and down the street, bang, it cracked. Um, I, I don't, I don't know if this is, I don't know what the, uh, answer is, unless you do want to dig around those pipes, a couple joints, and see what's underneath those pipes, that might probably be the only way to really find out what's happening.
I think eventually we're going to have to face the fact that we're going to have to ask people for help, properties that are on seawalls.
Well, I, I, yeah, and I was told, when I, when I wanted to lift the street before I got on the council, I was told we'd have to go through some, sure, that wasn't the case, after I looked at the plans, we didn't have to go through any of yours, and, um, I don't know, we'd have to go through a lot of people's yards, uh, I had a little bit of old blueprints, but merely Seventh and Eighth, we could have been lifted and done right, but again, we took the cheaper way out.
Alright, any other questions or comments for the city manager?
What, what, what?
You're, you're out of time.
Counselor, I appreciate the summary and the explanation there, the, my comment about the easements, however, would be that if we need to, we'll do it, because it benefits the city as a whole, and if we have an easement right to the corruption and deal with it, you know, that's something that we have to do, and I understand the sensitivity toward individual property holders. Um, the other question I had was about the, uh, company that did a major presentation to us about a year and a half ago regarding the pumps themselves, did we, did we have any communication with them?
I, I talked to the sales manager, who's called Bill Moore, um, he reached out after I posted the, uh, the, with the follows up, so, you know, he reached out, we had any questions until we were up to him.
We're, we're, uh, we're proposing with our addendum that. We're proposing with our agenda that the city, that the contractor gets awarded, that lets the city pay for the order of the valve, because we do get a better price, being government provided directly. So ideally, that we would pay for it, and then the contractor would pick it up and install.
But do we even hear from them with that proposal?
They've already given us their proposal for the pump that we were proposing in our construction, our pump station. So they're aware of that pump, they had it, they confirmed the pump coming.
So I'm a little confused, so we had no responses, but they were a response?
So they responded, like when I posted the bid, just, he just gave me a call, and solidly advertised. We had no response, no one showed to our pre-bid meeting. In the past, we've had three with law for any project. So we don't get very many, but it is a little concerning, if you want somebody interested.
Thank you.
All right, last chance. Ready to move on? All right, next up is the City Clerk report. Kathy, how you doing?
Good.
What's going on?
Well, I have it all on my report, I have nothing more to add, unless you have questions.
Questions for the City Clerk, I'll answer. How you making out?
It's been a busy few weeks. Good.
All right, we had the Big C meeting, it was a Big C meeting on Wednesday, and it was a huge success, and you did a great job. I appreciate everything you and the City Manager did to pull it all together, I'm sure others were involved also, but thank you for feeding everyone well. What about this Miami conference, is that coming up, or have you already gone?
It just went.
Just went? Well, how was that? We'd like to hear about it.
It was nice, I was able to network with a lot of the clerks here in Florida. We had, Randy was there, and he did a session on public records, so that was interesting to sit through, so a lot of good information.
All right, any questions or comments for the City Clerk? All right, well, I guess you're off the hook for this one. All right, now we are on to citizen comments. We purposely put citizen comments behind the City Managers before, because we knew he had a lot of information. So if there are any questions that were not addressed by the City Manager, now's the time to come up and be heard. Remember that any topic that you would like to discuss cannot be an agenda item, so everything else is all yours. Would anyone like to speak? Yes, please come on up, introduce yourself, and try to keep it to three minutes.
I think I know most of you, I'm Cheryl Gray from 118 Ninth Street, and a lot of the discussion today has been about Ninth Street, and I want to thank Kyle, he was kind enough in his busy day today to meet with me for a few minutes, just to go over where we are related to the check valve. I did send each of you a request that I personally and some of the other individuals on Ninth Street are requesting related to flooding, and, you know, it's not puddling on Ninth Street, we are having flooding in the lawns, in our driveways, and you all, you know, City Council has been aware of this for at least two years, and 18 months ago, you approved this study. And what I'm asking today is that we make Ninth Street a high priority. I understand, based on Kyle's discussion, that we are going to put that same check valve back in place. Now, according to our, in the study that we, the report that our engineers provided, those check valves don't do the job. And they won't do the job going forward either. Now, having said that, the last several months have been worse than I have ever seen in the 30 years that I've lived here. The flooding has gone two-thirds of the way up the street, even when we just have high tide, no storm, just significant high tides. That is not being responsible to us as citizens. I understand that you all have so much time left right now, but I do want to emphasize that this isn't North versus South, this isn't us wanting something special, we just want to have a safe and environmental living, we want to protect our property, and I do ask that we continue to put the existing check valve in, but also, we were looking at upgrading the check valve, and that discussion has sort of disappeared, and I'm wondering why that we're not, why we're not upgrading that check valve. And there are comments, you know, in the engineering study, that says that, you know, our current check valve doesn't open when it's below, when tide is below 2.3 feet. That's not very, we felt to do something. And I just ask that you consider doing more if you can.
Thank you. Any other citizen comments? All right, citizen comments are now closed, we're gonna go back to the City Manager follow-up. Mr. Reefer, would you like to address any of the citizen comments, or any comments made by council members?
I just wanted to talk about the upgrade, I think that was the other valves that were, it was gonna be different, is it would be the line of the soil. But we're confident that the LaPro inline valve, that we're using throughout the city is the best valve. So we want to put back the same valve, now obviously, if it was deteriorated, it wasn't a good condition, we could have done a little bit, we do believe that those aren't the best valve.
And the reason why we're seeing record flooding, more flooding than usual, is because there's currently no check valve, is that correct?
There is no check valve.
Okay, and that is a priority, just so everyone knows, that is a high priority, and that will be the first one installed out of the five or six that are missing. All right, going back to citizen, or council comments or questions for the City Manager, real quick. All right, now we are on to the consent agenda items nine and 10. This is for approval of the July 7th, 2025 City Council meeting minutes, and nomination in support for the Big C election of Madeira Beach Mayor Anne Marie Brooks, as former Pinellas Beach Communities representative for a two-year term. Do I have a motion to approve? Motion, motion is made by Frank Baker, do I have a second? Second. Second by Councilmember Harper, all in favor? Aye. Any votes? All right, the consent agenda passes. All right, now we are on to the regular agenda, item number 11. This is for consideration of Resolution 2025-05. Mr. Trask, would you please read the resolution and give us a brief summary?
So thank you, Mayor, this is Resolution 2025-05, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Bel Air Beach, Florida, approving the fiscal year 2025, 2026, a non-admirable assessment rule for the Villavue Estates and Assessment Area, directing the certification of the assessment rule to the Pinellas County Tax Collector, and providing an effective date. This is an annual resolution, evidently that the city has adopted, which sets that admirable assessment rule. It is set out in attachment to the resolution itself, and specifically those parcel ID numbers, and the annual installment due. And this is a direct, is a direct result of the work that was done in Villavue Estates for the undergrounding of the electrical cable communications utilities that took place a number of years ago. You'll also remember that there was evidently a bond issued for this work of about $1.6 million, and that bond was validated in a circuit court case that took place in the hang of 2018. So this is just a matter of, in my mind, a formality that you must go through to move the admirable assessment rule approval ahead.
Hey, Tom, just curious, how many more years do we have to do this?
Twenty, 2038.
2038, okay, I can do the math. All right, well, let's go to the citizens for comments, would any citizen like to comment on this resolution? Seeing as we have none, citizen comments are now closed. Council, I need a motion to approve Resolution 2025-05.
So moved.
Motion is made by Councilmember Elliott, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Roberts. Councilmember Elliott, you have the floor.
As our council has stated, this is kind of a necessary thing, the activity is already in play, the money's already spent, so I think we need to approve.
Any other comments? No? I will say, I'm very proud that we did this, and it's our member that's paying for this, this is not a citywide tax or anything, but as far as the item goes, we're very proud of that project, and I have to pay it every year. All right, so, any other comments? If not, Kathy, would you please call the role?
Councilmember Frank Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Inverley Shaw Elliott?
Yes.
Councilmember Todd Harper?
Yes.
Councilmember Under Swillings?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lloyd Roberts?
Yes.
Mayor Dave Gaddis?
Yes, and so Resolution 2025-05 passes unanimously. Tom, thanks for putting that together. All right, now we are on to item number 12, which is consideration of Resolution 2025-06.
So Mayor, Councilmembers, this is Resolution 2025-06, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Bel Air Beach, Florida, adopting the 2025 Pinellas County Local Mitigation Strategy, LMS Plan, making the local mitigation strategy plan function as the City of Bel Air Beach's flood plain management plan, and establishing an effective date. And just as some background, this plan was created through a number of cities, and with the help of the Pinellas County officials, the plan is a plan that is reviewed every five years. You remember that you've adopted this plan previously, or a plan previously, 2010, 2015, 2020, and 2020, this obviously is 2025, a five-year plan. And Kathy answered any questions you have about it, but it does require adoption to make sure that you're part of this strategy.
Thank you, Mr. Trask, and before we go to the council, let's go to the citizens, would anyone like to comment on this resolution? Nope? All right, citizen comments are now closed. Council, I need a motion to approve Resolution 2025-06.
So moved.
Motion is made by Vice Mayor Roberts. Second? All right, second by Councilmember Harper. Vice Mayor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I think this is very similar in structure to the last one we just approved, it's a, every five years, it's a formality, and there's no reason not to proceed with it, so just ready to vote.
Thank you very much, any other comments?
I have a question, if I could have a copy of the plan, soft copy, electronic, and was the plan consulted as we reviewed some of the projects that we have in play right now regarding flood mitigation?
So, City Manager, answer the questions relative to whether the city was consulted, it's my understanding that the city was consulted, but how would you want to add it?
You're asking if the city was consulted on?
If we reviewed the plan in the context of the projects that we have.
We purchase the, almost monthly, in the LMS, any grant applications that get submitted, the LMS has to weigh in for approval. So it's an ongoing rule, so we rank projects that other cities have too, and there's a scoring system, but everything that, for the HMGP grant, and the other, I can't remember the name of it, but you have to have the LMS approve your project, or else you don't go, so you're kind of needing to purchase it.
I've got a copy of the survey, I just needed it.
All right, any other discussion? No? All right, Kathy, would you please call the role?
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Elliott?
Yes.
Councilmember Harper?
Yes.
Councilmember Swillings?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Mayor Gaddis?
Yes, so Resolution 2025-06 passes unanimously, and thank you for your work on that, everyone. All right, now we are on to item number 13, which is, consider authorizing the City Manager to execute the fiscal year 2025, 26 contract for law enforcement services in the amount of $651,096, with the Pinellas County Sheriff's Office. Code enforcement services shall be on an as-needed basis at the rate of $63.73 per hour. Mr. Reefer, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. So this contract is pretty similar to contracts we've had in the previous years, they sent it with the track changes, so you could follow along where these changes were made. The difference was the increase to law enforcement was $16,000 to the contract this year, which represented 2.6% increase from past years, we've seen closer to 7%. Each time the sheriff has, you know, confirmed that there's a cost that is being shared across all various bodies in the county, is increasing it to reflect that. And then the law, the code enforcement, that did go up 8%, I'm not sure whether the influencing factor on that, but our code enforcement did go up, and it's an hourly rate, and since we started code enforcement with Pinellas County Sheriff's, we started at 20 hours a week, and it's always been a non-needed basis, as-needed basis written into the contract, and currently, we're operating at 16 hours per week, and we plan to budget 60 hours per week throughout fiscal year 2026.
All right, before we move forward, let's go to the citizens for comments, would anyone like to speak on this topic? Oh, come on, all right. Well, in that case, citizen comments are now closed. Council, I'm gonna need a motion to authorize the City Manager to move forward for this contract.
So moved.
Motion is made by Councilmember Elliott, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Roberts. Councilmember Elliott, you have the floor.
Obviously, law enforcement is an essential service, it's one that we cannot do without, and I frankly am very, very pleased with the services of our sheriff in that capacity. They show a very high degree of professionalism, they're nice people, they're good to talk to, I think they've got a very good feel for our city. The only alternative is for us to build on our own, which is a very imperative decision. We get highly trained people who go through all sorts of opportunities that the county can provide, and it just makes good sense for us to do this.
All right, any other comments? In that case, this is to authorize the City Manager to execute the 2025, 2026 contract with the Pinellas County Sheriff's Office in the amount of $651,096 in code enforcement services at $63.73 per hour. Kathy, would you please call the role?
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Elliott?
Yes.
Councilmember Harper?
Yes.
Councilmember Swillings?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Mayor Gaddis?
Yes, all right, Mr. Reefer, you are authorized to proceed.
Thank you, Mayor.
We are on our roll, let's not break it. All right, we're on to item number 14, this is, consider authorizing the City Manager to execute an extension and a 5% increase in the amount of $67,000 annually to the memorandum of understanding, affectionately known as the MOU for Accounting Services with Andrew Tess, CBA effective October 1st, 2025 through September 30th, 2026. Mr. Reefer, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. So Andrew Tess has been operating as a financial, finance, excuse me, the, what's the official term?
City treasurer?
City treasurer, I'm sorry, thank you. So he's operated as city treasurer since 2020, our first agreement was a six-month agreement. Our first agreement was a six-month agreement, and then from there, we did an annual agreement that will renew automatically each year, and we're renewing it this year. I just will point out that the, the original agreements that each year, the CPA preserves the right to increase the CPA speed by less than three percent each year. We've experienced three percent increases across each year until now. This is the first year in order to experience a five percent. I did not get information on the line, but it seemed reasonable for the services. And Andrew Tess, he is our city treasurer, but as you know, I have their body number each year. Works here regularly, two times a week, and prepares all our reports and our budget for us.
All right. Before we move any further, let's go to the citizens for comments. Here's your last opportunity. No? All right. Citizen comments are now closed. Council, I need a motion to authorize city manager to execute an extension and five percent increase in the amount of $67,000 annually to the memorandum of understanding for accounting services with Andrew Tess CPA. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion is made by Vice Mayor Roberts. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Harper. Mr. Roberts, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Really nothing to add. I think our city manager has expressed the effectiveness of what they do for our city, and he agreed to vote.
All right. Any other comments?
Yes. I have a question and a comment. One is, are the services of Heather included in $67,000?
Yes.
Thank you. And I, I do have a suggestion for a change in the wording, because when I read this, five percent increase in the amount of $67,000, it looks like the increase is $67,000. So I might suggest a change in wording to say an increase for a total amount of $67,000.
The actual renewal of the MOU provides in the second sentence, first of all, the first sentence is, this letter is to extend the professional relationship described in the MOU commencing on September one, twenty twenty-five through September three, twenty twenty-six. The second sentence is, for the term of this engagement, the fee will be $67,000. All other terms and conditions will remain as unaltered per official MOU. So they, and it has been changed in actual, to reflect that the total would be $67,000.
Okay. Very good. So it's just this memorandum that is not seen as.
I can assure you, it's different whenever I have to sign. I won't sign.
Very good.
All right. Let's see here. All right. Any other comments? No? All right. Well, this is to authorize the city manager to execute an extension and a five percent increase in a total amount of $67,000 annually, accounting services with Andrew Tess CPA. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Mr. Reefer, you are authorized to proceed. All right. Now we are up to unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business? See, the note takers, that's closed. Now we are on to city council comments. We're going to start this time with council member Banker, and just go in alphabetical order. Vice Mayor Roberts, you don't count.
Hi, Mr. Mayor. Regarding Bel Air Shores Locking, the three access gates and majority of council not going forward with the letter to Bel Air Shores on this matter. My loving years of experience never were these gates locked until COVID by the governor. Then Mayor wouldn't order them locked during urgent cleaning, and they stayed locked at night throughout until a letter was sent by resident asking for a lawsuit on this violation. While BS owns the lots and the tax parcel for tax purposes only, they are a trustee of these lots. Their trustee's duty is to protect the interest of the beneficiaries, which are the people of Bel Air, Beach, East of Cut Bull, not to use the trust of their benefits as they have done, which I won't give specifics at this time unless asked. Furthermore, while the lots are noted as the owner's name, Bel Air Shores, which no taxes are paid on these lots, the legal description so noted is Bel Air Beach Unit One, Lots Twenty-One and Seven. While some of the council said repeatedly about COVID, the barrier, we already see nearly forty times barriers in Bel Air Shores of one, fifty-five homes, now around forty-five. I've further attended Bel Air Shores meetings. I have not found in any way to accommodate the Bel Air Beach residents. Some comments were by their council members, that their property goes into the water, and on the record, it was even said that one council member has maps of his property by King George showing his, his property before the revolution. Other remarks were to install range monitors on the beach so the deputies patrolling the beach can you measure off the distance of the people on the beach and if they are on their property. While I witnessed signs on one owner's property stating not to sit on the beach, residents further went through a fight with them on umbrellas just a few years ago, which they then bent their laws, noting we can use umbrellas on our access areas only, while their residents can place umbrellas anywhere they want in a wet sand. To conclude, no resident, when it comes to another city or town violating our state constitution, where it's a safety of our residents, should be taking this one themselves. Our strategic plan, so he notes in section four dash four, to be a good store, and first goal is for public safety and health. That said, when I witness actions like this against our residents, is why I think our strategic plans are total children. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Banker. Next is council member Elliott.
Well, it is about back-to-school time, and so I congratulate all the residents that have young children that are returning to school, and I wish them a great year. I'm happy to say that on Ninth Street, I think this is the first time that we've had actually three residences that are filled with young children, and so it's really great when we have them around. It makes them feel like we're in a real neighborhood. So that's very, very good. As we think about the calendar, I do want to remind everyone, we already know, is that the end of September will mark the anniversary of the hurricane. We're still recovering. We're still rebuilding. We wish everyone well with that. We wish everyone some patience as, as lots of issues are dealt with. And bringing back to the check valve issue, we just have to have those in place at all the ways. We are without our very first line of defense, and that just has to happen. Thank you all.
Thank you. Council member Harper?
I guess the real challenge from council is just the sheer volume and the number of things that we have to address on a daily or a monthly basis, some of them are lots, some of them are matures, some of them are minor. So I just want to comment on the fact that we all have to make priorities and choices to what we do, how we do it, where we spend the money, and sometimes we will need to come to the residents and ask for additional help, whether that's an under advisement or assessments, or whatever that needs to be. So I would ask that the residents make an extra effort to communicate level with council so we know what the priorities and issues are, and recognize that sometimes they just take a little bit of a toll.
Thank you very much. Council member Swillings?
Yes, totally, yes. I was sorry, I think to do something from a couple of residents, one of the residents saying that the FWC is requiring to implement a new law to improve vessel accountability and reduce, reduce daily vessels. I guess the House passed a bill to allow big counties to set overnight anchoring limitations. Is that something that we're aware of? Makes a question to the, to our people. Are you aware of that? That I guess the county is going to then start addressing and set some limitations at some point?
Not really sure which, what you're actually talking about. I am aware, obviously, of the fact that there are currently provisions in Florida statutes dealing with the regulation of vessels. There is specifically a provision in the Florida statute, three twenty-seven point sixty, that provides that the city cannot, in fact, regulate boats and vessels that are in the intercoastal waterway. There are some exceptions to that. The city doesn't meet any of those exceptions. As for, as for the creation of mooring fields, there is a process to do that, too. If that's your question as to whether or not you want to create a mooring field, I can look into that, and.
No, 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 no. I'm not looking at that. I'm, I'm just interested, I just, the guy brought it up to me, and I was, it seemed like there's the bill, I guess the House has now allowed, like the county of Pinellas County, that they now will have the right to set some overnight anchoring limitations in, in these areas. I think that they would include in the area outside our, you know, the boats that we're talking about that are, you know, that are sinking and so on. I was curious, really, and asking if you're aware of that, and it doesn't seem like it's anything that the municipality is going to have to control out. The city is not, but it's going to be the county that's going to be able to control that or set something. And just curious if you're aware of anything like that.
No, no.
Okay. I'll forward it to you, and you can let me know of my rocker on that.
Council member Swillings? I will, I'll make a comment on that, which is, we don't want them to assign a limit over here, because if they do, that means that it's probably more than we already have. And that's making someone else's problem come here.
Ah, okay. So you don't think it's going to be, you think it would open up?
I think it will, it would compound the problem rather than solving the problem.
Yeah, okay. Very good. All right. Good to know. Thanks. Yeah, and likewise, I know that the, you know, the check valve and the flooding issues have been a challenge, and there's a lot of confusion around, you know, if the effects that you're seeing on a day-to-day basis are, you know, it might be interpreted as it's not working well. It turns out the check valve's not in place in that street, or there's just a lot of change going on right now while we're trying to settle the problem. But I believe that the proposals that we had in place that we're working on will address and will help the issue. And then further on, when we get the pump going, that'll address the last step, and will really significantly solve the problem. So anyway, just hope, hope for some patience, and I know it's been a long run, but I feel like we're, we're on the right track and just trying to do as fast as we can, and I thank you much, Kyle, for all of our, Kyle's getting down in these, your holes and, and put these things in. It's ridiculous what he's doing. It's insane. So I really appreciate it. Lovely to hear that. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Swillings, I, I have to ask, you're not down in Coco's Crush Bar, are you?
No, no. I'm over in Jacksonville, my daughter's stuff.
All right. Next up is Vice Mayor Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I pause as I forgot the date, the day and time, but I just want to remind everybody, and I know somebody will kick in here, that the county is coming, I believe, to our location to update anybody and everybody that would like to listen regarding the beach nourishment. So what was the date?
I'm, I'm not going to tell you, but they go by turn.
The mayor will give us updates on that.
Anything else?
That's it.
All right. Thank you. All right. Yes, I'd like to remind everyone that Pinellas County will be here to present on the upcoming beach nourishment this Wednesday from six PM to eight PM. That's all I had. Now that everyone's had the opportunity to speak, would someone like to make a motion, which are always by council member Banker? Who would like to make a second?
Second.
Second by council member Elliott. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right. Good night, everyone, and thank you for coming.